Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending this candidate forum. I am Corrine Shepherd, President of the Bloomington League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses any political party or candidate. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make informed voting decisions. Your vote is your power and will result in your voice being heard. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and early in-person voting is available here at Bloomington Civic Plaza starting September 22nd. We hope that this forum, as well as the candidate videos which are posted on our website and that of the city and will be replayed on Bloomington TV, will provide you with the information that you need to assist you in making your voting decision. Bloomington voters will use ranked choice voting for the City Council District 4 seat, so our forum tonight is a good opportunity for you to evaluate the candidates. Our city clerk, Christina Scipione, has been available, and I want to thank Christina for being available to answer your questions about ranked choice voting this evening, and she has left information outside the council chambers for you after the forum. So, thank you, audience, for attending tonight's forum. And thank you to our candidates. So, I'll turn around. Thank you, candidates, for the time and effort that you have dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of political polarization, we in Bloomington can be proud of our candidates for the efforts that they make to run positive campaigns and for demonstrating the civility in this forum that is becoming of the office they seek and that reflects the attitudes and demeanor of our community as a whole. We ask that members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum or the recording process. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Voter Services Committee for planning this event. Thank you to the City of Bloomington for the use of council chambers. And thank you to Bloomington TV for recording and broadcasting this forum on Bloomington TV. The forum will also be posted for viewing online at the Bloomington League of Women Voters website, the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. And the forum will be rebroadcast multiple times on Bloomington TV. This evening, Bill Johnson is our forum moderator. Mr. Johnson is a highly skilled moderator who has moderated many league forums. He is a member of the Wayzetta Plymouth League. He will now identify the rules of the forum and introduce you to the candidates. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Johnson. I'm a member of the Wayzetta Plymouth area League of Women Voters and the moderator for tonight's forum. I've completed all moderator training required by the League of Women Voters Minnesota and have been moderating forums for several years, including here last year. Before we get started, let's all turn off our cellphones or put them on silent mode. Thank you. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to the members of the public. The league is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues post complete unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts are edited. Clips of candidates' forums may not be used for political purposes. The recordings of candidates' forums in their entirety are the sole property of the League of Women Voters. The purpose of this evening's forum is to hear the candidates for Bloomington's four city council districts discuss issues that are important to residents of these districts. All candidates for the aforementioned offices, whose names will be printed on the ballot, have been invited to participate in this forum. A copy of the forum rules were emailed to each candidate. A copy of the rules is also posted in the lobby adjacent to this space. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. If your questions are not addressed tonight, please feel free to contact the candidates directly, and I'm sure some will stay around after the forum. The views expressed in this forum will be those of the candidate and not those of the League of Women Voters. The fact that the league is sponsoring this forum does not imply support of any candidate. Okay. Here's the format for tonight's forum. Speaking order was set before the forum and will rotate with each question after the opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements and then, at the end, 30 seconds for their closing remarks. Each of the questions, other than the lightning round questions, which have to be answered yes or no or one sentence, will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. League volunteers Joe Holub and Karen Deenan will time candidates' responses and hold up signs to show candidates when they have 30 seconds left, when they have 15 seconds left, and when they must stop. So, when you see the stop sign, please complete your thought or sentence, and that way we won't have to interrupt you. This forum will also have more lightning rounds where candidates will be requested to answer very briefly, either with one sentence or with a yes or no. As moderator, I will ask all the questions. League of Women Voters Bloomington and I determine which questions will be asked and attempt in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the questions submitted by Bloomington residents to the League of Women Voters via email prior to this evening and by attendees during this event. If you'd like to submit a question this evening, please write it on an index card and pass it to one of our volunteers who is collecting those cards. Card collectors, please raise your hands if they did. All right. Serving as question facilitators today are Cynthia Jorgensen and Karen Lundquist, members of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. All submitted questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. No campaign materials, signs, brochures, cards, buttons, or clothing with candidate information are allowed in the Bloomington Civic Plaza. This forum is being video recorded. Candidates, please speak directly into the microphone so that your responses are heard and picked up by the video. When you speak, please look at the audience, not at me. I won't take that personally. Introduction to the candidates. Here are the candidates for Bloomington City District 1. Mr. Dwayne Lohman, Mr. Al Nord. Candidates for City Council District 2, Mr. Paul King, Mr. Shawn Nelson. Running to represent City Council District 3 are Ms. Lona Dalisandro, Mr. Mike Hartley. Candidates for City Council District 4 are Mr. Lugman Abdi, who apparently is not here, and Mr. Victor Rivas and Mr. Isaac Rubel. Mr. Abdi has not replied to the league's invitation to participate in this evening's forum, so we'll proceed without him, per our rules. All right. Let's start with opening statements by the candidates, two minutes, and we'll start out with Mr. Dwayne Lohman.
Thank you for being here. My name is Councilmember Dwayne Lohman, and I'm glad to be here at home. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for all of your volunteer efforts to put this together. I know it's a lot of work. I am also a member of the Women Leagues of Bloomington. One of the things I think about having the opportunity to have served the city in which I've grown up in is how much we have here in Bloomington. I am just so proud of our schools, our police department and what they've been able to do, our fire department, and just so many of our public servants and what they have done over the years. And the council that I serve with and what we've been able to do over the last four years. Just a short time ago, we were in the midst of COVID, and we're in the midst of transition for our entire city, and we've come out stronger and tougher and leaner and meaner. And I think that I see a future forward for the City of Bloomington that's sparkling. I think about the mission that a number of us gathered just right here, here in this building. The mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And that work will continue over the next four years, two years, as we focus on what Bloomington residents want to see in the City of Bloomington. Place where folks, if you want to raise a family, like I have, with now two children, or if you're at the twilight of your life, it's a place where people want to be here in Bloomington. And I look forward to having the conversation today about that this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Al Nord.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm Al Nord, your future council member. I've lived here for 55 years, which is my whole life. I've been married for 27 years. I have two kids. I love this community. I love everything that it stands for. I'm looking forward to keeping everything going the way, basically the way it's going, maybe change a few things, a little more transparency. It's just good to be here, and I'm glad to see a few people here. It'd be nice if more people were involved in this, but I guess people got better things to do. I'm looking forward to a little discussion tonight, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Paul King.
Yeah, my name is Paul King, and I'm applying for a job for City Council Ward 2. A little bit about me. I've lived here my entire life, 67 years, Al. I've raised two kids and currently have three of my six grandchildren living in the city. Small business person here in Bloomington, have been for many, many years. I've been involved, heavily involved, in the community through the J.C.s, the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and youth sports. Primarily, you know, I guess I've also was co-chair of the Bloomington Renovation Renaissance, which helped update the public schools back in the late '90s. Some of that construction actually wasn't completed till around 2001, 2002, but one of my prouder accomplishments for that. You know, right now, I got my daughter, daughter-in-law are both teachers, son-in-law is a janitor in Prior Lake, and my son lives down in North Carolina. He's a, he works for NASCAR. So, again, I'm applying for a job, hope to get that job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Shawn Nelson.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum for everyone who's here tonight, is watching or will watch this. And thank you to Mr. King for stepping forward, to put himself forward, and all the other candidates that came here tonight. This is very important for people to be here and be able to hear directly from us on our thoughts on the issues. And for those of you that don't know, I'm Shawn Nelson, and I've been, it's been a true honor to be able to serve this community for approximately the last six years. I couldn't have hoped for a more completely normal timeframe in which I served. But we, as a community, have come together so much because of what we've been through. And I've lived in Bloomington for over 20 years, bought my first house here. I am also a small business owner. I am, have been actively engaged in the chamber, in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and have the honor to serve on Veep's board at this point in time. And I love this community. I love Bloomington. It's where my wife, Anne, and I have raised our kids, and I am now an empty nester. My kids are launched, to a certain extent. They still call for money and advice, mostly the former. And when I, you know, I'm running because I think we've been very successful in the last six years, the last few years, and I want to continue that. And so, what I did is I looked back at what I talked about last time I was at this candidate forum, and I talked about building a community where we have places to do things like eat, shop, and play. We have more restaurants. We have food trucks. We have a brewery. We have things like that. We've made changes to our parks. We've made massive updates at Dorret Scott. We have our Parks Master Plan. We're doing those things. We have places for all of us to gather and get together. We have a community that appreciates all that our seniors have done and provides compelling reasons for young families to move here. And I look forward to talking more about all of those things during the course of this conversation tonight, so thank you again.
Thank you. Lona Dalisandro.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lona Dalisandro. I'm currently the city council member for Bloomington's District 3. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here and giving me the opportunity to share with you why I would like to be reelected and serve you again. I first ran for this office in 2021 because I believed we needed a leader in this office that could be proactive and innovative about serving the community. And in my time in office, we've made significant investments in and prioritized what you, through unprecedented engagement, have told us is important to you, like public safety, like parks and natural spaces, like small business development. I am honored to be your council member, and if you reelect me this November, you can be assured that I will continue to champion our work as a leader in sustainability and sustainable community practices. I will continue to advocate that we remove the barriers that might prevent revitalization of our neighborhood commercial nodes. I will work to fund innovative ways to support our seniors and the families that care for them with things like public health, transportation, and housing. And I will advocate for fiscal policies that are community-centered, equitable, and fair, and, most importantly, deliver measurable positive outcomes for all of us. For more information about me, you can read about these priorities at my website, www.votforlona.com. But for right now, I just want to let you know I'm excited to be here. I'm grateful for all of you, as other candidates, for stepping up to serve this community, and I look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hartley.
Or, oh, sorry. Thank you. You got that right. So, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming out, especially the league for hosting this event, the other candidates, specifically Councilmember Dalisandro. I've learned in the last six weeks that it's a lot of work running for city council. I used to sit over on that side of the room where it's a little darker, not under these bright lights, as the city's police chief. I served this city for 25 years on the police department. I'm one of the few that worked every single rank in that department. I've worked under a couple different city managers, under the, kind of, the leadership of the city council. And all in all, you know, the city has marched forward, and they've hit where I think they need to. I'm running because, as a 26-year resident, I'm woven into this community in a lot of different ways, and I'm connected in a lot of different ways, whether it's volunteering, Bloomington Crime Prevention Association president, where we hold the annual book'em sale, shameless plug for that. It'll be next June 2024. But we sell books and we put money back into this community, into the schools, victim advocacy organizations, faith-based organizations, anything that's got even the smallest little tinge of crime prevention. I also served on the board of a military organization called Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, Bloomington, where we assist not only current enlisted military personnel, but also those that have, are veterans and in need of services. So, I look forward to getting out, meeting people as I go through the neighborhoods. I knock on every door, regardless of who I think may live there, and I learn a lot about what people in Bloomington are looking for in a city council member. So, accountability, transparency, is what I brought to the police department. It's what I will bring to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Rivas.
Good evening. Thanks to the Women League of Voters for allowing me at the last minute to participate in this forum. The reason I want to run again, I did it in '21, is because after speaking to numerous people in District 4, I learned that the people in that area feel disenfranchised by the city. They don't feel that they participate in the decisions that the city is making in regards to improvements to parks and all of that, housing, and numerous things that concerns citizenry in that area. So, after learning that and visiting again with the people that I visited knocking on doors, and again, I did exactly what Mike did. I knocked on every single door, regardless of affiliation. I went everywhere. And I continued to visit with some of them, and they still have the same concerns. They feel that there is no transparency or accountability with the city's decisions, and that's the reason I want to participate again, to assure the residents in District 4 that we can do things and allow them to participate in the decisions that we take as a city government. And that's my priority when elected. That's what I will pursue to the best of my ability, to make sure that there is transparency and accountability with every decision the city makes. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Rubel.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the city staff, and fellow candidates. It's an honor and privilege to be here tonight and participate in this forum. My name is Isaac, and I'm running for Bloomington City Council because I care about Bloomington. And I'm specifically running for District 4 seat. I'm a small business owner and a community organizer. I'm also a father of beautiful children that go to Bloomington Public Schools across the city. I have children in Valley View and children in Indian Mountains and Southwood. I'm running because I want to make things better for Bloomington residents and District 4. I believe my business skills, community organizing expertise, and forward-thinking qualifies me as a candidate to represent District 4. I have a vision that moves District 4 forward with the rest of Bloomington. I'm an advocate, and I believe I can advocate all District 4 residents and bring their voices to the city chamber. Our city is unique, forward-thinking, and engaged. We have done so many good things over the years, and I want to continue that good work that has been done. And Bloomington has been a leader in change over the years, whether it's regarding housing, economic development, sustainability, and many other initiatives. I want to make sure those great key initiatives that makes Bloomington a place to desire, a place to come and do business, a place to live and work, continue. So, if you're from District 4, I'm asking for your support to rank me as your first choice, and I'm sure I'll deliver good things for Bloomington and District 4 residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. These first two questions, each question, you'll have a minute and a half to answer, and it'll be in a rotating order. If you need the question re-ask at some point or anything, let me know. First question. This year, Bloomington voters will consider a half percent local options sales tax to finance bonds to pay for three projects as part of a citywide referendum. Do you support the three referenda? Why or why not? And the question first goes to Mr. Rubel.
Sorry. First, I support all three questions. And the reason I support is because I believe Bloomington has a place in the future. And in order to make sure we have a healthy community that's active, engaged, we need to invest in our city infrastructure. Those projects are key to our city's progress and development. And the money that will go into, 60% of it, will come from outside, folks that will come and shop in our city. So, I'm absolutely 100% behind the three projects, and I'll vote for that.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
I'm a, I'm a little hesitant on most of them. I agree with that the senior center definitely needs to be updated, because my parents used the senior center when my mom had Alzheimer's, you know, 15 years ago. So, I'd love to see a better senior center built, but I'm a little hesitant on making it a wellness center where there's going to be tons of different things, other than just taking care of needs of seniors. As far as, like, the Bloomington Ice Gardens, we could probably find money somewhere else and to implement a half percent sales tax on that. It needs to be updated, but I think the budgeting of it, the Bloomington Ice Center should make money to pay for itself. And as far as the issue with the Moyer Park in the Nine Mile Creek area, I like to leave things natural, so it'd be nice to keep the creek bottoms natural as can be and not pave over everything.
Thank you. Mr. Lohman.
Thank you. This is a difficult question for folks. You know, 2/3 of these projects are in the first district, so by that faction, I could say, well, maybe I support it because it's in my district, but this is a difficult thing. Taxpayers have certainly seen a lot of increases over the years, and I feel for you. It's difficult when taxes are increases. But here's the good thing about this particular sales tax that's being done. These are regional facilities that are utilized by folks all over our region. And that's why I think if, and we're going to support these things. We talk about the ice garden, and my opponent is right. It is a, you know, part of our enterprise fund-type things. But when you look at the types of things that need to be done with the ice garden in terms of the refrigeration, you talk about sustainability. That's not something that we can, from a capital standpoint, be able to just raise a little bit of money by doing that. These are things that are really value decisions, and so we need to support those things. And so, I would ask, as you look at these three items that are on there, ask yourself as a taxpayer, would you rather take that and pay for it yourself out of our general fund dollars, or would you like to see other folks join along and help and assist with paying for that? That's really what this comes down to. I hope that you will support these three priorities. These are things that all residents have said that they would like to see us invest in.
All right. Thank you. Mr. King.
First of all, I'd like to say that the Bloomington briefing's a little disingenuous. They say either we pass the sales tax or we increase your property taxes. Didn't talk about alternative funding, or maybe we're spending too much of the $150 million. And I'll start with the wellness center to begin with. Years ago, we built two activity centers, one in each high school. The school board went to the city and said, hey, we'd like you to partner with us, and the city said, nah, no thanks. So, now we have two activity centers sitting there, underutilized, that could be used for the community, one on the east side, one on the west side. And we're not approaching some of these kinds of solutions to problems, instead of just spending more money. Like Al, I agree, the senior center needs to be revamped. Again, I say, as far as number two goes, where'd all the profits go the last 30 years at the Bloomington Ice Garden? If they're not making money, then maybe some people need to be fired and new people brought in because ice time is at a premium. Moyer Park, that needs a new shelter and bathrooms, but we really don't need to pave the creek bottom down there. So, I think it's just overspending. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
I agree with Councilmember Lohman. It's a tough question. It's one that, when I get up at 3:00 in the morning at 57 years old, and I get back in bed, I lay awake and I think about. I'm not for duplicating what's offered in the private and already public sector. As Paul King has said, there are options, obviously, in the private sector for a fitness center. My worry is that when this was sold as a 67% being funded by outside sources, and it wouldn't fall on the already strained backs of our Bloomington taxpayers, that, you know, the wish list grew. I've worked in government for 32 years, actually 32-year-plus years. I know how the game's played. I know how, when you ask for something, you always ask for more because you know it's going to come under scrutiny, such as it is tonight. So, my concern is that there's things in each of those plans that we don't need. I also believe, I used to take my kids down before they all left the nest, down to the Nine Mile Creek and Moyer Park, and we actually enjoyed kind of the more rustic and non-paved when we would get past 106th. So, the community center, I agree, Public Health Department, they're basically operating on a shed over there. They need more space, as does the senior center. But at this time, I can't support it because of what's in it. I think if we had to go and simply fund this with just taxpayers internally, Bloomington taxpayers, it would be scaled down. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dalisandro.
Thank you. So, the projects that are in, are being asked on this referendum are projects that were already in our capital improvement plan. So, when the city decided, what could we potentially take to our state legislature and, you know, receive the approval to consider the sales tax? They had to choose projects out of the CIP that were regional amenities, right, that they serve residents beyond the City of Bloomington. And so, if we don't do this, essentially, you know, they'll be part of the CIP and we'll continue to work on ways to fund them. The reason that this is a good opportunity for us to fund them, as has been said already, is that we're talking about leveraging a sales tax as opposed to a property tax or a levy on the taxpayer here in Bloomington. If you believe that they're a regional amenity, then you can believe fairly easily that they're, they could be funded by the region, in which case, then you don't have to be concerned that you are paying for it 100% out of your own pocket. Whether that's 50% or 60% or 67% or 75%, I'm not sure that it matters as much as can we get this funded. I'd rather fund it that way than fund it the way that we might have to if we have the CIP. So, that's why I will support them. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rivas.
Again, I agree that it's a difficult decision to make. I'm not against progress. I do want to see the city improve in certain areas. I, I do want to see the city improve in certain areas. However, I think the city gets into a contradiction within itself when it says that wants to pave the Nine Mile Creek, to a degree, at large cost, when the city's pushing towards sustainability, and what is the damage that it's going to do to the environment, whatever lives in there, whatever creatures or leaves in the area. And it's been proven also, just south of us, the Cannon River bike path, when it got, concrete got poured all over the place there, it just made the, the flooding during spring a lot worse than it was because the water had no place to go but to just stay on top on the concrete. So that's one of the reasons that I'm against that part. I wouldn't say that I'm completely against the project, but just parts of it. If, if there is any way that it could be separated and, and made into an effort that that it separates the three projects into one and address one at a time rather than go for the whole thing as one.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify that you do have the opportunity to vote on all three individually, so that, that is the way it is set up currently. And I support those, but most, I support these projects. Most importantly, though, I support your right to choose. This is not something that the council is choosing to do. This is something that we're putting before you to choose and give us direction on, on whether or not you want to do that. And so in my mind, what is most important for you in terms of looking at who you want to vote for is what we're going to do if you approve it or if you don't approve it. And if you approve it, I am going to work, and I've heard from many of my colleagues that are concerned about the scope. The reality is, is the scope for some of these projects, particularly the Health and Wellness Center, is not already predefined. It is general and vague, and I know that causes some frustration, but we will have community conversations. We will have a significant amount of engagement with you, the public, on what should be in there. If the community doesn't support things that are already provided by the private marketplace, then those don't have to be there. If they don't support providing additional space for, office space for the city, those don't have to be there. I've heard a number of concerns, and I will also clarify that there is already a trail along Nine Mile, most of which is paved. This is talking about paving the additional part of it. But if people are worried about having bikes in that area, which is something I've heard from a number of people while I've been outdoor knocking, that does not have to be part of the project. We're going to engage with you, we're going to listen to you, we're going to find the right projects. And in my mind, I sincerely hope we bring the project costs for these all down. We don't have to spend the money.
All right, thank you. This one is, I think you've all touched on it, but I'd like to give each person a chance maybe to, to address it. What is your understanding and opinion of the proposed Nine Mile Creek corridor construction and restoration? Ms. Dalisandro.
Sure. Well, you know, first and foremost, it's a renovation and rehabilitation project, right? We, we care a lot about our public spaces and our natural spaces in Bloomington, and we want them to be as natural and as, back to the kind of environment that it was as possible. And that means that we need to re-establish natural green space, natural vegetation, make sure that the flora and fauna there are, are appropriate, and get rid of invasive species like buckthorn or like garlic mustard, right? So first and foremost, we need to do that. I know that there are erosion issues on Nine Mile Creek, those need to be dealt with. There are people who live around there who would have potentially property damage if we didn't do those things. And then there's things like the stairs need to be renovated, the bridges across the creek need to be renovated. The opportunity for us to recreate some of Moyer Park and Central Park's amenities is there. Now, on top of that, we do want to make it most accessible to everyone that we can, and that includes, you know, considerations of ADA requirements and that kind of thing. But it doesn't mean we have to do all of those things that I just mentioned, nor does it mean that we're going to do it without your input. That's the benefit of this. So I would like us to consider this project as another reason to take that jewel of our community and return it to its most natural and beautiful environment. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Robel.
Thank you. I said those three projects are key community investment. We have, in Bloomington, we have an aging community, and we have young people. And in order to make sure our community can age well here in Bloomington and access those world-class amenities, we have to invest the money. We have to invest the money and make those amenities world-class, accessible, available to our seniors. Additionally, the youth will have, and young people will have, access to those facilities. So it will improve the health well-being as well as make Bloomington a place to come. So I see the investment not only something that will do good for the residents right here, right now, but it will attract others to come our city. I think that's my understanding of the project, and that's why I support.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nord.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What is your understanding and opinion of the proposed Nine Mile Creek corridor construction and restoration?
I would, like Paul King said, it would be nice to have the pavilion replaced with the new bathrooms and everything. Again, I, I would appreciate having just, keeping it natural. I know the A D A. ADA, sorry. That, that's an important thing because people do all need to be able to use the park. But there is a paving, pavement down in, for most of Moyer Park. I don't, I would rather not have it stretched all the way to the river. The other thing is, since none of these projects are actually written in stone, they want us voters to vote on them without really knowing what we're voting for, apparently. I would like to maybe have a little more transparency on what the final project would look like and maybe the final cost of it. And that's my opinion on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, thank you very much. As, as I mentioned in my previous comments, I support this project. I think it's important to recognize that the vast majority of this is for restoration of the park area, as Councilmember Dalisandro was talking about. In terms of the pavement, I mean, there are already trails, and this is an opportunity to make them more accessible to more people. I was door-knocking just last week with someone who lamented the fact that they were not able to get down there with a relative who was in a wheelchair, just because of the slope and the nature of the slopes getting into from Moyer down into Harrison and over to Central. I think it's important for people to recognize that's actually three parks there. It's, it's Moyer, Central, and Harrison. And with regards to Mr. Nord's comments about the, the idea of we'd like to make, have more concrete, I agree with you, with an exception. In order to do that, the city has to spend a significant amount of money. We have to hire designers and architects to design all that, to do all that, to cost all that out. And frankly, when we did the community center over at Valley View, that was one of the complaints, is that the council went forward and did that in order to bring it to the community, to say what it was. And so what we're doing, before we go through and spend a lot of money, what we're asking you is, does this make sense? Is this something, a direction you want us to go? And as we go that direction, we're going to engage with you, we're going to partner with you, we're going to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
I would say that there's already access. That recent survey that kind of was put out in 2022 that asked Bloomington four-hundred of the ninety thousand residents what they felt as far as, you know, to justify these three things. Eighty, eighty percent of the respondents said that they are satisfied to highly satisfied with the current Bloomington parks. I use them parks. I've used Nine Mile Creek, Harrison, Central Park. It's already accessible. It's a crown jewel already. I haven't been down there in probably five years, but when you dump wastewater into a, a natural flowing body of water, you're going to get erosion. So if there's talk about eliminating wastewater or, or stormwater to going in there, hopefully there's not wastewater. But I, I think, you know, this comes to the point too, and I'll just say, on the transparency piece, I've been following this from day one, and I don't think I've ever seen any correspondence from the city in my mailbox that said that, hey, if you approve these, then we're going to go back and then we can kind of wheedle out things that we don't really believe we need. That, that changes the game, folks. I mean, that, that's, that's, what that tells me is that you're going to just shoot high, and then we're going to go back later. So I, I just, that's why I don't support it. I, I'm for amenities, I'm for quality of life investment, but I think we have to do it so that we're transparent and people know exactly what we're going to be doing.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman.
Thank you. Well, when we first brought this project forward, it was supposed to be a natural resources plan. And I want to thank my two councilmember colleagues up here for very succinctly describing what we're doing here. And I think one thing that's important to realize is that our residents support working with natural resources. In our 2022 survey, over eighty-one percent saw that either it was essential or very important of our overall quality of the natural environment in Bloomington. And that's directly the reason why we reached out to do this particular project. You know, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, oh, it's not transparent, and then also you don't have this defined. So we are, as Councilmember Nelson said, we're trying this time to be a little more open to the idea, and we've invested a lot of time and effort now on our engagement proceeding. So I fully support this, and I hope that you will as well. Again, it is up to you whether you want to support this particular project. But in many of the surveys that we've seen, this is what residents have asked for, and now we're going to try to deliver an opportunity to be able to do that. And so what I would ask is, when we look at accessibility, we need to make sure that if we're going to be a welcoming city, that everyone has the opportunity to participate in all of our natural resources. We just, we just cannot let that go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King.
I'm sorry. I'm a businessperson. I like to look at facts and figures before I make a decision on anything. Same thing with the household budget, I bet. You know, you're going to buy a new refrigerator, you're going to take a look at the costs and that kind of stuff, what amenities are in the refrigerator before you actually purchase said refrigerator. The plans are vague, and basically they get the money. Are they going to just spend all the money, or are they going to scale the project back to meet what the citizens want? Based on past experience, I kind of would guess that they would spend all the money. Therefore, I would kind of be against this basic proposal. Like Al, I believe the pavilion at Moyer Park needs to be updated, and the bathrooms need to be done. Anything more than that, probably not.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Rivas.
I, I'm totally against it. I'm due to the fact that, that there is no transparency at all. I work for a private business, and as a matter of fact, I'm working on budget for next year. If I don't specifically explain the people involved in accounting on the financial aspect of the company that I work for, they will totally send it back to me and, and describe in detail what exactly is that I am planning to spend that money on and how I am planning to spend it on. And that's how we operate in our households, right? We don't go over spending because we can get into financial, financial trouble. What bothers me is the transparency that the city doesn't share with us. I, actually, as running a department in, within the company that I work for, everything has to be explained and specific for every dollar, and we have to be accountable for that. So I want the same accountability for the city. If they don't explain to me what they're planning to do and how they're planning to spend that money, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be against it. And, and that's also based on the decision of the many people that I have spoken to, to in District Four. We want to see factual and tangible information in front of us to be able to make an informed decision on how to vote. So I'm going to say that I am against that for that reason. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, these next two questions are lightning round questions. The first one, do you believe that parking space is inadequate at, at any city parks? Yes or no? If yes, please name the park or parks where the parking space is inadequate. Mr. Nord.
I have not been to any parks where there was not enough parking space. Every park I've ever went to, there was always adequate parking.
All right. Mr. King.
The only one I can think of is Running Park. There's not enough space there.
Okay. Mr. Nelson.
The park I would think of that has on-street parking is Westwood, due to pickleball and BAA athletics and things like that, so. But I, I think the neighborhood works with it.
Okay. Mr. Rivas.
I haven't visited one that needs parking spaces so far. Everywhere I go, I always manage to find a good spot.
All right. Ms. Dal, Dalisandro.
I know that there have been challenges in, in the Bush Lake area and all from time to time, especially on especially hot days and things like that, so we could consider that potentially a problem, but I have not experienced it. But then again, I, I walk to most of my parks, so maybe I'm not the person you need to ask that question of. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hartley.
We live on North Crest Park, and there's not a lot of parking there, but we are a welcoming neighborhood, and we don't mind if people park in front of our houses, so I just haven't seen it as a problem.
All right. Mr. Lowman.
It's always in the eye of the beholder. I could think of Efa where I grew up, Eighty-Fourth and Fifth. Some may say, hey, you know, certain things go on, we need to have more parking there. But, you know, I haven't seen that, that out there. But, but again, it's all in the eye of the beholder.
All right. Mr. Robel.
I went to a couple parks across the city, so I haven't seen any inadequacy.
All right, thank you. All right, second lightning round question. What do you cherish most about this community? One sentence. Mr. Rivas.
I like the fact that the airport, Mall of America, any shopping place, any, we're right in the middle of everything, fifteen, twenty minutes away from everywhere, and I think that makes us a prime location for businesses or for just living in Bloomington.
All right. Mr. Lowman.
Well, I got to say it's the people, hands down. The neighbors in which I get a chance to talk to, and it's supposed to be a lightning round one, so I'll, I'll stop there because I've got a lot to say about the people.
Thank you. Mr. Robel.
It's a welcoming city.
Great. Mr. Nelson.
I'd echo Councilmember Lowman's comments. It's the people. You guys are awesome and privileged to be amongst you.
Mr. King.
I think it's the people. We're the biggest little town around, I think.
Ms. Dalisandro.
You can just call me Lona if you want to, that's fine. I don't mind. It happens to everybody. I love the commitment we have to our natural spaces here in Bloomington. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hartley.
I echo the other folks up here. It's the people. When we needed it, the community supported our police department, and that meant a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Nord.
I would agree with it being the people, and I also really appreciate when there's a huge snowstorm, our streets are clean within twenty-four hours.
All right. We're now back to minute and a half answers here. So the next question, there are Bloomington residents who don't feel like they're being heard, and community engagement is something that is valued by many residents. How do you define community engagement and when should it be prioritized? Ms. Dalisandro. Or Lona.
So, so community engagement is three things to me. The first thing is, are we as your leaders accessible to you? I have an email address, I have a mobile telephone, I am in the chambers regularly. I have had more than a thousand meetings with residents around the city. I'd like to think that being accessible is something we should all strive for, and I feel good about my role in that, but I think that's number one. If, if you can engage with me, you should do that. Number two, I think that it needs to be proactive about its communication. I will tell you that I have criticized publicly our city staff at times for not being proactively communicative. Sometimes even I, as a council member, have gotten caught off guard, right? That's an area for improvement, but that's okay, right? We are here to improve every day, and we're here to try to make things better for everyone. And as an advocate on your behalf, sometimes when I can make change for us as council, that means it also translates to benefits for you. So accessible and proactive. And then thirdly, that we are trying hard all the time to improve and create new ways for engagement. And I think you can see that through our programming, through the new festivals and community events that we've created, and the opportunity that we have to engage with you through our town halls and other public events. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. I would define engagement as the opportunity for people to share in a conversation with city leadership, their thoughts, opinions on the direction, the policies, and things that we're doing. I agree with Councilmember Dalasandro that we need to be proactive about engaging with the community on those items. We actually do, as a city, have a chart that we use that has different levels of engagement, from this is an issue that we're just going to let people know about, there isn't really a huge issue, it's not something to get into, all the way up to what we're doing on the ballot, where you get to directly decide. And so they have different stages in between there. And we literally talk about which level of engagement should we be at for a particular issue. And we do that right up here, so everyone can see it on the cameras and know what decision we made in terms of that engagement. And that's how we kind of prioritize those things. I also think it's us getting out there. We have made some changes in the last couple of years that have been fantastic, in my opinion. The listening sessions, I know there were concerns when we first went to those. We have brought out so many new people that are able to come in and have an honest conversation with the council and staff, and learn about what's going on, and really help them get their issues addressed. We have, you can call into our meetings now. You weren't able to do that before. So you can just see when, you can watch it on TV or the internet and go, okay, instead of coming here for five hours on a Monday night, we are trying to be better, and I think we've made good progress.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. There are Bloomington residents who don't feel like they are being heard, and community engagement is something that is valued by many residents. How do you define community engagement, and when should it be prioritized? And I guess, how should it be prioritized?
Well, it should always be prioritized. And I think the council has done a pretty good job of creating different ways for the citizens to be heard. I mean, like the listening sessions. And there's always the open comments at the city council meetings. But if you ever attend one or watch one on YouTube, nobody's ever here. And then the people that are here are usually just here when there's a hot button item that is directly affecting them. My thing would be that when people do talk to the council about their problems, that the council, a lot of times, just disregards what they say because they've already got their agenda, and they're going to pass whatever they have on their plate to begin with.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, I would define community engagement is going out and meeting with the people that we're here to serve, whether you're a department, you know, working for the city or you're a city council member. You have to have an ear. You have to listen, probably more than you talk, to be effective. And I think, I'll just say it, because the police department has been community engaging for reasons that we had to, to basically to bridge divides that we had historically with some of our residents, especially those in the diverse communities. But it's extremely important. And it's a way to, I hate to use the word sell, but what you're doing is you're letting people know that, number one, you're listening to them, you're giving them the respect, that their concerns are legitimate, and that it's not just lip service, that, you know what, we're listening, but we've already going to kind of go a different direction. You know, following the killing of George Floyd, we had to community engage like we never have before. Police departments throughout the country had to do that. We did that because we trusted and we believed in the men and women that we're serving. And not everybody was responsible for what happened in Minneapolis in that day in May in 2020. But it's important, and I think to the point that some people in the community just feel like they bring concerns forward. But if it's kind of outside of the kind of the political lane, it's just not going to be taken into account.
Thank you. Mr. Rivas.
I feel like Mike, on regards to that, especially because I have a group of acquaintances in District Four that used to come over to the meetings every Monday. And since they stopped people from participating in the city council meetings, including myself, I used to come in on Mondays and sit at the back and always never make any comments, just listen to the whole thing, just to be informed. And that is not allowed anymore. There is no participation from the public in the city council meetings. And again, I feel that the people are not being allowed to express their opinions on regards to decisions that the city council is making. Just as Mike just mentioned, the fact that just because the comments or the concerns that the public has on regards to certain political decisions, they're not being taken into account. And as a matter of fact, I have felt myself that way, because we made certain concerns to the city council, and we were shut down, that, you know, that wasn't allowed to be brought up into the conversation. So that tells me that the decisions had already been made, and therefore, they couldn't be discussed at that point. So that you feel like you're being left out of participating in the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robel.
As a community organizer, this is kind of like my niche. I believe community engagement and education and outreach is key to city development. During the pandemic, I'm a business consultant. I work with small businesses. And I had people come to my office and say, I need help with small loans or small grants. And when I ask them, where do you live? They say, City of Bloomington. And we go through the process. I notice the city has already engaged them about the grants available to them. So the city has always been proactive about public health outreach, economic development outreach, buyback, community engagement and education. And from the council perspective, as a resident, I'm happy with the way that we get informed through the YouTube, through Let's Talk Bloomington, through Bloomington Briefing. So I think the city is doing pretty good in terms of departments, the work they do, the police department, the public health department, the economic development department. I would love to see more out on the ground in those neighborhoods where people are more underrepresented. And that's one of the reasons, that's the drive that brought me here as a candidate, to make sure people in District Four have the right representation at the council, an advocate that can bring resources to them, instead of them coming to council and voicing their concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman.
Sir, I'd like to have you read that question one more time.
Yeah, let's see. There are Bloomington residents who feel they are not being heard, and community engagement is something that is valued by many residents. How do you define community engagement, and when should it be, and I guess, how should it be prioritized?
You know, that question is key, that residents don't feel that they're being heard. And you know what? I think that is an important thing to acknowledge. And we've got to prioritize that. Now, I think my colleagues on the council that are up here today have defined what it is. But I want to show you what it looks like. We had a project here where we wanted to put together a new strategic priority plan. And we've done it before, it was just the council. But this time around, what we did was we opened it up to residents. We opened it up to staff. We opened it up to other key leaders in the community. And they put together this particular mission statement. Our mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And throughout that whole process, we heard that. And what we're doing now, and Councilmember Nelson talked about it, we have a continuum. You know, we always can do better. The thing that I would say is, from being on council, the thing I've learned to be the most important is that being heard and listening are really two different things. And as a council member, I got to tell you, the humility of finding out that you're wrong. Let me tell you, my wife tells me all the time, hey, he got this wrong. And so I look forward to, and I appreciate those folks who are standing up here today and saying that. And I'll try to do my best to be more humane. Thank you.
All right. Mr. King.
I believe community engagement is huge. You know, the listening sessions are good, the call-ins are good, the being able to stand up at a meeting are good. However, in walking around and talking to Bloomington citizens, there's an awful lot of them that don't feel like they're being heard. And so I think that's the key. That's the task, and I think it's a great task that we have before us, to try to open that up so that the citizens of this great community are heard, and we listen to them and do what, we work for them, or hopefully, we all work for them and do what they need to be done.
All right. Thank you. So many questions, but so little time. Next question. How can the city attract and retain young families? Mr. Rivas.
I believe the city's been doing quite a lot on regards to that. If there's something that I have seen over the last 12 years, is a lot of improvement on things that do attract young families. But at the same time, there are areas in the city that are basically a lot of retired citizens that live there that are being, I feel they are being neglected, their needs are not being addressed as they should. At the same time that we're trying to attract young families and keep young families in the area, I think we should also be concerned of our existing citizens and residents of the city of Bloomington, and try to bring them in also and take care of them. For instance, you know, the senior center needs improvement. Yes, we know that. This has been going on for quite some time since I can remember. And nothing has been done about it, just a lot of talk. I think in order for us to continue to thrive and attract young families, we also need to be taking care of our elderly that lives in the area, because it's very essential. Just as a young family wants to have grandparents around, it's nice to have them close to you rather than traveling long distances to visit.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Robel.
I got asked this question in a different setting. And what I said is Bloomington is reverse welcoming and offers opportunities to all families. So I believe as someone with great ideas and innovation, I believe the city can create more incentives and programs to attract young people. And one of that will be to elect the youngest council member to council. Isaac is your first choice. And that's one reason to say, to sell the city to young folks. And definitely, we have a lot of families that recently moved to Bloomington, especially the Fourth District. Pretty much, a lot of doors that I knocked, they told me they recently moved to Bloomington. And those are young couples. And that's what excites me about the future of the Fourth District and our city. And we will continue to attract more talents by offering housing, jobs, and opportunities to people with creativity and creative ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman.
Thank you. Well, I could say I used to be the youngest person on the council, and I used to sit over in that very seat over there, and I used to live in the Fourth District. So there you go. When my parents both moved here to Bloomington, the thing about this town that attracted them was, you know, one-third of the community was devoted to, as Councilmember Dalasandro talked about, is the natural environment. Also talked about, you know, the schools. The idea that the school board and our council trying to meet at least once or twice a year to talk about those priorities. And then housing, you know, making sure that housing is affordable, so that everyone who wants to live here, no matter what stage of your life is, that you can live here in Bloomington. And so that's really what we need to do here. We need to invest in the things that attract people to come here. And now, there's some folks that are on this dais here tonight that don't believe in the things that we need to invest in. They've told you already. They said, we don't want to invest in the three things that we're putting before you. I want you to consider that. So many people are looking for the types of things that we're putting before the city. We have taken a direction. A number of us from all over the city have put together a strategic plan, and these are the things that are in there. And I hope that you'll support us as we move forward in that direction of trying to bring to Bloomington our next generation.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
Yeah, Bloomington has a large aging population, so it would be nice if we could create some affordable senior housing so that people that are getting too old, that are having trouble taking care of their homes and are on fixed incomes, could afford to move into. And that would open up a lot more single-family homes for younger families to move into. And rents are way too high. I mean, my daughter is looking to move out of Bloomington because she just can't afford the rents and apartment buildings anymore. And to attract younger families, we just need to open up more single-family homes. And that way, if we can give older people better options to move into affordable senior housing, it would be a great help.
Thank you. Mr. King.
I kind of go along with Al. It's a difficult question, but we have an aging population that we'd like to turn over those homes to young families, and that's how we're going to grow in the future. But they're on a fixed income. All they have to do is pay their taxes and insurance, and they have a place to live, pretty much. We need to turn those properties over and maybe have some low-income senior housing available that they could move into, and some of those properties then become available to younger families. So it's not an easy question to answer, you know, but I think that's one thing that we maybe need to look at the future here.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. I'll just give a kind of a quick list of things. One, partner with the schools is absolutely essential. When a family is looking for a place to live, the school district is probably the top priority when they have children for them. So we need to continue to be strong partners. People have talked about housing, and they're absolutely right. And the council has innovated in that area beyond what almost any other community has done with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, which has led to the creation of affordable senior housing within this community. Projects have already been built because of the creation of that. We recently did things with single families, only to drive out forty to fifty thousand dollars of cost from building a new home, so we can build some of those things. We're looking at the missing middle. So if people want to downsize from their larger home because their kids, or they're like me in an empty nester, and they want a smaller home, they can get maybe a townhome. They can do things like that. Those are things that we have already acted on and are already really strongly working on. Along that list, I think public safety is one of the top things that people want to see. And the commitment of the council and this community to our police and fire services has never wavered. And thank you for all of those people within our community that serve. The amenities that Councilmember Lowman talked about, we have more parks than almost any bar in the area. And it is one of the big drivers of people coming here. Lastly, economic development, jobs, good jobs. We see people investing in growing their businesses here. And so with that, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Ms. Dalasandro.
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Yes. How can the city attract and retain young families?
I was enamored by everybody's question, and I forgot what we were talking about. Just kidding. That's not true. Okay, my list is really long, and so I'll lighten quick it, and if I can get back to any of them, I will. Good schools are an imperative. Amenities that serve families, like the ones that we're building when we do our Parks Master Plan. Housing that can be paid for by folks just starting out, that's why we have our Opportunity Housing Ordinance, and we're working on what we know to be housing that is for people who are making sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Programs that engage them in the fabric of this community. We must see partnerships, nonprofits, communities, community engagement projects growing in this community. We're seeing that, and that's exciting. We need jobs that attract them, not just jobs like the high-tech jobs that we know that we're getting through the semiconductor programming that we're trying to attract here, but also entrepreneurship. That's why we have our Small Business Development Center coming out, and that's why we do things like food trucks. Just go to Scrambling Egg. Those guys are like under twenty-five, and they are making it, and it is incredible. And I want them to be successful. And yes, I agree. There's this foundation of public safety, good infrastructure, and fiscal policies that ensure that you can count on the city to backstop and support those programs. Our tax increment financing district, for example, for the good folks at Geropolis is a great example of how we do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, I agree with a lot what's been said, but I'm going to put public safety at the top because none of the other city amenities matter if it's not safe to go visit the park. If there's crime in the Nine Mile Creek corridor, no one's walking down there regardless of the accessibility. So the housing... So the housing, look, the housing stock's depleted. I agree. It's, you know, the houses are, in a lot of terms, 70 years old, they're no longer efficient. When young people are coming in looking at a community, it's tough to argue, do you settle for a 1957 Rambler with schools that are, you know, no offense to our school board members here, but they have their challenges as well. And so I would say that they're looking at affordability. But I'd also add on here that, you know, again, not to hammer this point, but 40-year-high inflation has hit everybody, everybody, the cost of just living life. And so I think people do look at the taxes. I think they do look at, you know, what they're getting and the services for what they're paying. And to hit on the older residents, they're struggling right now because when they reach out and they're looking for some assistance, they're told to downsize. And I agree, we can build stuff that they can move into, but they can't, a lot of times can't bring their pets, they can't bring their gardens, they can't bring what's sustaining that life and what they've enjoyed about Bloomington all these years. So I'd say, you know, it's attracting people, we just don't have a ton of housing opportunities. We could change that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try and get two more questions in here. This will lightning round question goes first to Mr. Robel. What is the most important skill a leader should have? One or two words.
People centered.
All right. Mr. Nord.
Listening.
Mr. Lowman.
I'd say humility.
Mr. King.
Communication.
Mr. Hartley.
Admit faults.
Ms. DeLaSandro.
Humility and curiosity.
Mr. Rivas.
Listening and caring.
Mr. Nelson.
Honesty and integrity.
All right, we're back to a minute and a half question. It'll go first to Ms. DeLaSandro. How can we improve public transportation in Bloomington? Ms. DeLaSandro.
Great question. I love the idea of a, I think we used to have one, right? If everybody remembers the B. We, I love the idea of a bus service that is intra-city. I think it would be used very effectively. But, you know, we don't, we don't buy our buses ourselves. Metro Transit runs our buses. We have conversations all the time with our Hennepin County Commissioners about how we could potentially get better services here in the city, and I would support those and I would advocate for them. I love the idea of good public transportation on multiple counts. One, because there are lots of people in our community, including those seniors who don't drive anymore, who could benefit from having access to good metro transit. I think we also have young people who, you know, there's this middle, there's this group of people who may not be ready to drive, may not be able to drive for whatever reason, who can leverage that public transportation. And we are, just by being a city that doesn't offer it inside of its boundaries in an effective way, in an efficient way, we are, we are holding them out of, you know, working with us and being a part of the fabric of this community. And we're doing it passively, we're not doing it actively, right? We're just not letting them get to the places that they can go to. So I'd very much like to see an intra-city transit service within the city limits. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Robel.
I think the need is to be work done to improve our local transportation needs, especially the aging population. We also need to make sure we address things that put people's life at risk, such as if there is a need for stop signs, caution, and things like that. And we can do that improvements by working with our Bloomington engineers and Transportation Department in compliance with the city's comprehensive 2040 plan to make sure residents have access to transportation and the city is transit-friendly and accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
So, not to steal Mr. Hartley's thunder, but I think the top issue is public safety and a lot of our public transportation. And Bloomington City Police have done a great job working with partners at the Met Council, Metro Transit, and so forth, and working on some of the bus and train lines to improve the safety there. As an example, the Transportation Center at the Mall of America had a time period in which there were overdoses multiple times a week, and our police department came in and took that over. And during the first month of that, there was one. They're doing a great job out there making those things safe for people so they get back and can use those things again to get to where they need to go. And so, you know, thank you to our police department there. Second, we need to look at innovation. Scott County has a program in which they, you can use an app or call it by phone, and you can get picked up at your house and taken to certain key locations, transportation hubs, and connect into that public transportation node. It's kind of that last mile portion that is a challenge for many residents that they aren't able to get there. And this could be to get to Creekside Community Center for seniors to be able to take advantage of the opportunities, activities, programs there, or to the pharmacy, or the grocery store, or just to a station for a bus to go to Minneapolis or wherever they want to go. And so I think we need to think creatively. This is frankly looking forward. I think one of the top priorities for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, I think obviously public transportation is underutilized. It doesn't, as you sit at a light out there by the Mall of America and you watch the train come in, it's sad how few people actually utilize that mode of transportation. But I think to Councilmember Nelson, I'm going to give it back to you here. I think we do need to get innovative. We need to figure out why, how do we get more people to utilize public transportation so that, you know, it's worthy of the investment, putting in, you know, it's, obviously the cost of a light rail going out to the western suburbs doesn't compare to buying a bus or the B-line that we used to have. But I think you need to look at, is this going to be utilized? And how do we set it up so that it is the most convenient for our citizens to use? And I, it's just, it's sad, but, you know, right now, we just don't, we just don't see, it's, I'm all for obviously providing the opportunity for people because that's a lot of times their only mode of transportation. But we really need to dig deep, and we need to look at numbers, and we have to figure out how do we best serve the community that really relies on public transportation and do so so it's worth the cost and the community is getting the benefit of that mode of transportation.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman.
Thank you. I was hoping it was me. I'm excited about this topic. I'm served on the 35W Solutions Group, and I want to thank Councilmember Nelson for giving me that opportunity to do that and do so. The thing I've learned over my couple of years of being there is that public transportation or transportation really is the heart of economic drivers of most successful regional cities. And let's be honest with ourselves here. If we want to be a successful region, we need to invest in that. And, unless I'm going to say the silent part out loud, it does need us to look at density if we're going to do public transport. And we need to move in that direction. And so, you know, I would like to have us look at, you know, American Boulevard, Old Shakopee Road. How are we looking at those particular areas in which we can innovate, we can densify? And as Councilmember Nelson and Hartley have talked about, public safety is incredibly important. And Councilmember DeLaSandro, I tell you that, she rides around town with officers in her experience with that. So as we look at this public transportation piece in the city of Bloomington, the B-line ain't going to cut it. Something that I used to do when I was a kid is not going to work for the future of our city. And we need to be innovative, we've got to be cutting-edge, and we have done that on council. We've taken on these issues, and I think we can really innovate in this thing. And I'm looking forward to the next several years to have that opportunity to have a bite at that apple.
All right. Mr. King.
I don't know if it's Scott County or Shakopee, but I have a number of relatives that live down that area, and they have a program that basically brings you to the bus stop. So if you're 85 years old and you got eight blocks or nine blocks to walk to the bus stop, they actually come pick you up, bring you to where you're going to be able to pick up public transportation and utilize it. Otherwise, it's useless. So, you know, I'd like to see us looking into some program of that nature. And again, I don't know if it's, I know the relatives that have used it, but I don't know if it's Scott County's program or if it's actually Shakopee's program. But it works really, really well, and I think that's, you know, you don't need to reinvent the wheel always, you could just kind of look elsewhere and go, "That works, maybe we can adopt that here."
All right, thank you. Mr. Rivas.
I would second that. I mean, Councilman Nelson mentioned that in Plymouth, actually, they do the same thing. They, all you have to do is use the app or a phone call, and they come over to your house, right at your door, pick you up, take you to the bus stop or to the mall, if that's where you. I think it works, and I think that's something that the city of Bloomington could assimilate. But I would like to ask all of you here present, how many of you use public transportation? I gave it a, I gave it a try, and I do it for fun, okay? I do it for fun, just to go from one end of the line to the other. I don't feel safe most of the time, I'll be honest with you. I don't feel safe riding the train or the bus on occasions. However, sometimes I am the only one riding that method of transportation. So what the city will have as a challenge is how to convince people or generate that public usage to actually say that the money has been well-spent, that the investment is paying dividends by doing it. So the challenge is to prove or to actually encourage people to use that public transportation that the city would offer, whether it's now or in the future. It's, most people don't really like to ride public transportation unless they have to. So is it worth the investment? I would say yes. But there are a lot of questions to be answered.
All right, thank you. I'm going to get in trouble, the timekeeper here, but I'm going to try and get one last question in before we do closing. So please answer in one sentence, starting with Mr. Nord. What is the biggest challenge facing Bloomington?
I'd say transparency.
Mr. King.
I'd say transparency as well.
Mr. Nelson.
The budget. We're a community that has a lot of things that were built 70 years ago that need to be repaired and replaced, and we have costs coming due to that, and we need to be thoughtful in how we approach that so that it's affordable for residents and businesses here.
Mr. Rivas.
Transparency.
Ms. DeLaSandro.
Fiscal responsibility and strategic investments in the face of climate change and unprecedented inflation.
Mr. Hartley.
I agree, fiscal responsibility, aging community, and we are going to have a lot of things come and do here in the next five years, 10 years, and we're going to have to prioritize what we're going to spend our tax dollars on.
All right. Mr. Lowman.
Environmental sustainability and fiscal responsibility.
Mr. Robel.
Fiscal responsibility and public safety.
All right, thank you. That's all the time we have for the questions. Now the candidates are invited to make closing remarks. You each have 30 seconds. Mr. Robel.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, fellow candidates, and the city for putting this opportunity together. My name is Isaac. I'm running as candidate for the 4th District. I want to ask your vote as your first choice, if you are from the district. And if you're not from the district, but you have a relationship to our district, I would like to ask your support and call the district and ask them to vote for Isaac. Thank you.
Mr. Rivas.
Well, cut me by surprise here. It was deep and taut. I would just like to encourage you to vote. You want to be represented, show up to vote on Election Day. And you have been given enough information today, so I encourage you to vote for me, but also educate yourself on what's out there and make an informed decision on how and who are you going to vote for. Please show up on November 7th and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley.
I also want to thank everybody for turning out and the other candidates and sitting council members. I would just say that in my 26 years as a resident, my 25 years serving this community as a police officer, I forged a certain reputation. And I would certainly bring the same approach that I did working up to the interim police chief to the community as a city council member. And it's accountability, transparency, and I think the most important, responsive. Thank you.
All right. Ms. DeLaSandro.
Thank you. Since my election, I have had literally thousands of conversations with residents and businesses throughout the district about the issues that are important to them, even when they disagree with me. Through ride-alongs with the BPD, community events, one-on-one coffees, employee conversations, and facility tours, I have witnessed the vibrant culture and pride that we all have in this city. I've enjoyed these moments of listening and learning because being of service to you is literally my favorite part of this job. I humbly ask that you will reelect me, honor before November 7th, and I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, for everyone here, for everyone who will watch this and get engaged and be thoughtful in using their power to vote. It's been a true honor to be able to serve this community for six years. I hope I can continue on if that's your choice. The most gratifying part for me has been getting conversations and feedback by email from people that maybe I disagreed with on an issue or a vote or something, where they said they appreciated my thoughtfulness, the questions I asked, the approach that I took, and they felt heard. And so that's what I'll continue to do as your council member.
Thank you. Mr. King.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. Greatly appreciated. I guess I'm applying for a job from the city of Bloomington residents, so please vote for me come November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nord.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out, and just remember to get out and vote, get your friends to go out to vote, your neighbors out to vote. Everyone needs to vote, no matter who you're going to vote for. I would appreciate it if you would vote for me. It would be a win for me and Mr. Lowman because I'll get an opportunity to serve on the council, and he'll be able to spend more time with his young family.
Thank you. Mr. Lowman.
I want to thank you, and I want to just have a moment of humility here. You know, many of our folks here talked about this idea of transparency and open see. In a 2022 survey, the residents of Bloomington, by 57 rated, "Bloomington an excellent place" or "good" for transparency, and over 80%, if you look a little bit further down on that list. But let me say this today. The things that we are doing as a city, if you want those things that we're moving forward on, I ask for your support. I think that our best days are ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Thank you to the city of Bloomington for technical expertise and the use of council chambers. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Bloomington, for sponsoring this forum. Thank you to this evening's volunteers. This forum has been video recorded in its entirety and can be viewed unedited on YouTube. Links will be posted on the city of Bloomington website and on the LWVB website. It will also be rebroadcast on Bloomington Cable TV until Election Day. Welcome, and thank you to future online and cable TV audience. Remember to vote, honor before, Tuesday, November 7th. For information about registering to vote, voting early, and voting in person, visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website, www.mnvotes.org. Audience, you are invited to visit informally with the candidates and league members immediately following this forum. This concludes the forum. Audience, you may now applaud the candidates.